Folks, we'll start in a minute, but we're having technology issues. No, no, it wasn't website. All right, let's go ahead and call meeting in order. Uh, let's go ahead and start with the roll call and the pledge of allegiance.
I was just getting ready to leave, Mayor. Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen. Finley. Martin.
Here.
Peck. Rodriguez. Mary of Acorn.
All right, great, let's hear the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's go ahead and remind everybody, if you want to speak, at first call, public invited to be heard, you need to get your name on this list, and so if you don't get on the list, by the time, uh, public invited to be heard is over, then you can talk, but you're going to stick at the end of the meeting. The other thing is, I hate doing it, but if you hit three minutes, we're going to have to cut you off, so I apologize for that. And so, uh, it's not on the agenda, let's go ahead and do a approval of minutes, and then we'll, we'll, uh, have some, we have a couple of certificates to hand out. Let's go on to, huh?
I was gonna.
No, no, the minutes is on the agenda, the certificates aren't. So let's go ahead and do approval of minutes before we handle the certificates. Do I have a motion for the January 30th, 2018? All right. Yes, uh, all right, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Yeah, close enough. Uh, it passes unanimously. All right, do I have a motion to accept and approve the, uh, regular session minutes of February 13th? And I'll second that, let's vote. All right, and that also passes unanimously. And so, uh, back in the day, I don't remember who it was, uh, but council used to be all positive, at least I think, right? Once upon a time? It was always positive? Never happened? Okay, well, anyway, well, uh, in our, in our community, I, uh, I wanted to, I saw a couple of cool things that happened, uh, in our community lately, and so I figured, uh, it'd be a good idea to recognize that. First of all, is Drake here? Did he wind up com- all right, Drake's here, all right. We're going to do the, the ladies first, that's okay, Drake. So, uh, uh, what people, some people don't realize, but we actually had a state victory, a couple of them, in our community, and I thought it'd be kind of cool to, uh, acknowledge, uh, the Longmont High School girls swim team, and, uh, it's actually a combined team between Longmont, Erie, and Meade, um, and I believe we have representatives from Meade and Longmont here tonight, and the coach will accept, we also, we, uh, their cities didn't do it, so we went ahead and got three copies to, uh, recognize the, the girls. So, uh, uh, this is to congratulate, uh, offer congratulations on behalf of the city to the Longmont Girls Swim Team for winning the 2018 3A State Swimming and Diving Championship. This was a unique group of young women from the St. Vrain Valley School District. The Longmont team is made up of girls from Longmont, Meade, and Erie. This year's championship was extra sweet for the Longmont team because they finished 15th in last year's competition and finished on top this year, so that was cool. And I love the quote from one of the competitors that I read in the Times Call, quote, "I think why we did so great today was because we remembered to smile and have fun," end quote. Um, I was a swimmer in high school and college, and, and it can be fun, at least at the events, but, or the, the meets, but man, practice stinks, doesn't it? Um, I would like to invite Coach Kelly Shipley to come up, uh, with her gr- uh, to the podium with the swimmers to maybe say a few words, and then we've got certificates, and we'll get a picture with City Council. There you go, Coach Shipley, yep.
Right here, okay, so I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I do want to just identify, um, we also do have a state championship swimmer who got first place in her event, Lucy Matheson, right here.
What event?
So we have a wonderful group of girls, and thank you for bringing us down here tonight, so, thank you.
All right, what, what event? Ouch, good job, good job. All right, well, come on over, it's council, let's go take a picture.
Ready, set, cheese.
And we also have another state champion with us today, Drake Engelking, and, uh, he goes to Longmont High School, and Drake is the 2018 4A State Champion in the class, in the 160-pound weight classification, at least that's what they tell me, right? So. And what's, and what's cool about that, I've also, so I used to swim, but my boys wrestle, and, uh, going from, uh, a stinky, m- mat-ridden gym where you cried throughout your training until you got to high school, you know, that deserves a cer- that, that deserves this. So come on, come on down, say a few words, Drake, and, uh, then you're going to get your picture taken. The what? Oh, everybody, all wrestlers cry when they're boys. It hurts.
I would just like to thank, uh, the Longmont High staff, and Longmont High School, and then the St. Vrain Valley School District, and of course, all my family members, and the Longmont High students.
All right, thank you, and did they tell you that you and I are going to have an exhibition match now? Come on over, let's take your picture. I'm kidding, I don't want a piece. Come on, City Council. Dad, you want to come down and get another picture?
Oh, yeah.
I imagine that you've been to a lot of those meets and practices, you deserve a picture. All right, let's go ahead and talk about re- agenda revisions and submission of documents, motions, et cetera, to direct staff. Mayor Protam Christensen.
So I have a couple. I believe, uh, and two of these come from, or one of them comes from Coffee with Council this weekend. We, uh, somebody was speaking here a few months ago, I believe, about tethering, uh, tethering of dogs and making that illegal for, in, uh, some, you know, checking into other anti-tethering ordinances because it is very cruel to have your, have a dog tethered day and night, 24 hours a day, forever and ever, and on a two and, two-foot leash. I was wondering if that has been checked into. I thought we gave directions to check into what other cities had done, I think Denver has an ordinance against it.
I'm trying to find that on my email, but I can't find it right now, but what I can do is look for it and get with you all, and we'll.
Yeah, just update us. Okay, thank you. The other thing is that, um, our city, along with many other municipalities in the state, about four years ago crafted a document very carefully, uh, asking, or, promoting, um, the idea of the Colorado Municipal League, um, supporting legislation in favor of education and education funding, and they recently decided, for some reason, to drop that, and I think that it would be a good thing for this council to send a letter in support of opposing that, that stance. Pardon, well, CML decided to drop the, um, the long, it wasn't very long, it was a paragraph of, um, about education, and a lot of work had gone into that, months and months of work, and people involved all across the state. CML said that, um, because there are lobbyists for education down at this state, they don't want to waste their time essentially doing that. But, you know, if they have lobbyists down there, it's not working, because we're still, like, 49th in the country in school funding, so I do think that we should ask them to restore the full statement, and, uh, that's what my, uh, I would move staff to, uh, move to, uh, direct staff to draft a letter opposing that dropping of the, the full, uh, language about education in the CML, uh, mission statement. Pardon? Well, they, um, yes, they are thinking about, I mean, they have already, they've been discussing it, and they've been asked to restore it, and I think that it would be good for us to send a letter to that effect. So I would move that we direct staff to draft a letter to that effect. Do I have a second?
Yes, that was seconded by Councilmember Peck.
Oh, okay.
The, uh, the, uh, any other discussion? Uh, Councilmember Martin, on this, is there any other discussion on this particular issue? All right, then you want to go, I guess my only question is, can we also, uh, ask staff to bring back, um, just the information? So I, I don't know what happened, but I'd like the background and.
Right, right. We'd have to still take a look at the letter and sign off on it.
Okay, shall we vote? That passes unanimously.
Okay.
You have one more issue?
Yes, one more issue.
Yes, yes.
That's all. Several weeks ago, uh, and I believe this is the second, uh, regular meeting since we, in my opinion, in a very hurried manner, voted to, uh, not collect the fees for any campaign violation. I don't, I have been thinking about that in light of, uh, some information and also several letters I've received in the mail, um, and also a comment at Coffee with Council about that, um, thing, I don't really think that's the right way to approach it, and I think we should bring that back and revisit it, because I, I believe that, really, the right way to fix that is to fix the Fair Campaign Practices Act, and that will take some time. I need, we need to correct it and, um, examine it carefully, because these have been problems that have gone on for 10 years, and it's, uh, there are a lot of flaws, and we need to fix them, so it doesn't continue to be a problem.
Uh, there's three people in the queue, is there anyone who has anything to say on this particular issue? Okay? And Erin, you're getting in the queue, all right, so we'll go with Councilmember Martin, you're on the top.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, I had the same soul-searching exercise, uh, today, watched, I'm very grateful that we discussed that in the first 15 minutes of the last council meeting, because that meant I only had to watch the first 15 minutes five times. But at the end of that exercise, I still was not entirely sure what the motion that we passed said, so that's not a good way to leave things. I would have a question for the city attorney. In, in your opinion, did we direct you to suspend enforcement immediately, or just look into suspending enforcement? And was that a, a proper thing for us to do?
Mayor and Council Eugene May, so I went back and looked at the video, if the motion was to not collect the fine, and that was 6-0. Whether that was proper or not is, I'm not sure I would be qualified to answer that.
If I may make a motion to reconsider, can I offer replacement language at this point?
So a motion to reconsider would be timely, the council rule of procedures provide that it could be taken up at the next meeting at which formal final action can be taken. Uh, I believe that was our last regular session that we had, so this would be the first one after that.
Okay, in that case, and it's complicated, I have to have my reading glasses, because I can't do this off the cuff. I move to reconsider the motion to direct staff to suspend enforcement of the Fair Campaign Practices Act and bring recommendations to council regarding amendments of the act by following, by substituting the following language in the direction. Staff should present a review of relevant state law. Staff should bring recommendations as to how to clarify the existing language about electioneering communication disclosures. There should be an assessment of how Longmont's penalties compare to those in other comparably-sized municipalities. Staff should bring back an opinion as to whether enforcement of the ordinance may lawfully be suspended pending the review of the ordinance, and staff should further bring up any other recommendations that it sees fit regarding improvement of the law. In other words, a little help here, please, um, while making sure that, um, we want in, we want to keep transparency, but ensure that we do not discourage qualified and diverse candidates from running for office here in Longmont.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Was that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. I do have a question, though, is this discussion timed?
Yeah.
All right.
You have the floor, Councilmember.
I have the floor. So I do have a question for our city attorney, because this has been brought up. Eugene, did you, do you think that we violated the charter since, since the Fair Campaign Practices Act is an ordinance? Did we violate the charter in overriding the process on the ordinance? With our, with our, um, request for you to suspend the, uh, dismiss the fines?
So, so Mayor and Council, you are acting, asking for direct legal advice.
Oh, and you can't give it now?
That is up to council to waive the privilege, we can have an executive session on this if you'd like, or you could waive privilege and I can answer.
I'll wait.
I move that we waive the privilege and, uh, get an answer.
The voters' consensus, okay, anybody care about the answers?
Let's, let's do a motion, I move that we waive the, the privilege.
Technically, it's, I mean, yeah, technically it's out of order, but I don't care, no one's going to call in, no, but, but what I mean is that there's a motion on the.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, but let's, let, no one's, if nobody cares, let's just go ahead and do it. It's fine.
Okay, we need to vote on this.
Let's vote, yeah. I don't, yeah, then the next question becomes if, uh, then the next question becomes, if one council member doesn't vote for it, does this have to be unanimous from a legal perspective? I don't think so. So we've got three no-votes so far. Okay, so it, it passes six to one with Mayor Protam Christensen and Councilmember Finley, voting no. So the question is, do you believe that we violated the charter?
Mayor and Council, no, I am not aware of any charter or ordinance violations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Finley. Microphone.
I don't know that I have, I've been told by two, uh, two attorneys that we did not, in fact, violate the, the charter, and I, I take some umbrage, um, on the recent editorial by Gordon Pedro alleging that we did violate the charter in an arbitrary and capricious manner, we were neither arbitrary nor capricious. We directed staff not to collect the fine, and, in my opinion, we did that until we could update the act that was being used as a political tool. Now, I know that Gordon's not a fan of Sarah, and it looks a little bit like a political vendetta on his part in wanting Sarah to pay $16,000 on a simple little, a simple, uh, act of campaigning that was brought up by Councilmember Bagley, and would not have even been known by anyone if he hadn't brought it up. It wasn't egregious, it wasn't something, she wasn't trying to hide anything, it was simply bad reporting, or not even bad reporting, but reporting in a different manner, because the act itself can be interpreted in many different ways. I think we need to relook at the Fair Campaign Practices Act, because clearly it's been used as a political tool, and I would vote for Marcia's, um, motion to look at it, but I do, I, I am insulted that we have been charged with violating the charter, because we didn't, and, uh, I'm tired of hateful, I'm tired of hatefulness in our community, and I hope that going forward, we can have less of it.
I'm just going to speak, because I know, we've got Mayor Protam in the queue and Councilmember Martin, I guess the, uh, first of all, the, the, my understanding, just is kind of, I mean, I, if you would have asked me if we, what we're talking about doing tonight is pretty much, I thought, what we'd already done, which, and so, meaning specifically, and, uh, I guess I want to just, uh, I guess I want to be clear that, um, that, what's the right way to say it? When I made the motion, actually, when I made the motion to not collect on Councilmember Levison's fines, um, it was with the understanding that legally, this is not a criminal statute, it is an administrative statute, which means that this is not the equivalent of, oh, you got a parking ticket, or, oh, you got a criminal, or a speeding ticket, or, oh, you were, uh, you know, fighting in public? The city council and the city attorney's office does not collect on that money. This is an administrative ordinance that says that it's the responsibility of the city, and specifically the city attorney's office, to collect on what literally is a civil judgment, meaning that if Sarah, if that $16,000 is, if, either she waits the 14 days, and it meaning that if Sarah, if that $16,000 is, if either she waits the 14 days and it enters as a judgment, or she goes to court and she loses and it becomes a judgment, that means that the city council has 20 years to collect on that judgment. That's the statute of limitations on a judgment. And so when I said, don't collect on the fees, we didn't let it out of the law. We didn't say that we were going to rewrite the law. We didn't say, all we said was, if a judgment sits on attorney's desk in perpetuity for 17 years before they collect, that is within our, as the creditor, that is within our legal right. So the only umbrage I took was, I'm not an incompetent attorney, and if you know my relationship with Sarah, I'm definitely not playing favoritism. My point in doing this was to bring, shed light on a very serious issue in our community that exposes people who want to run for public office to tens of thousands of dollars, which was not the original intent. It's just used by political adversaries to beat up on each other. I was, I mean, somebody tried to get me to pay 1.4 million. I mean, really? 16,000, really? And so the whole point, I mean, I don't, I don't want to hurt Councilmember Levison. The reason I made that motion was not to play cronyism, it's because $16,000 in fines is ridiculous. And, and so that's the reason why it was brought up. But my understanding is that there are people in the community that are viewing this as favoritism, and again, this was not Valerie, the city clerk, that found it, or Gordon Pedro that found the problem, or anybody else. It was me. I sat down, I filed the allegation, just like she did against me, tit-for-tat, whatever you want to call it. But it's not like, I paid my fine. I was, I mean, I just paid the $200 I owed, and I didn't want Sarah Levison to have to pay 16,000, whether she's my political adversary, opponent, or whatever. I just didn't want that. And so people can judge me for being a bad lawyer, for being dishonest, for playing cronyism, but it's just mean. Politics in Longmont is a blood sport, and I grow tired of it. So judge me for what you will. I don't think Sarah Levison should pay 16,000. And if the public thinks I'm a jerk in violating my oath of office, I don't care. I don't want to be mean. So, but I will, I believe that we need to have a motion, first of all, to reconsider, or actually, we don't need to reconsider. We can just go ahead and, actually, we do need a motion to reconsider.
There's a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider or to, or for the?
Yeah, there's a motion to reconsider by replacing with.
Do we, do we need to do one at a time, or can we do it all at once, Eugene?
Mayor and Council, it would be better to vote to reconsider, take the vote to reconsider, and then any subsequent motion.
Do we have any, so is there, Councilmember Christensen, or Mayor Protem? Do you want to say something before we vote?
Yeah, I do. I would like us to just, all right. I would like us just to vote to reconsider because the way we reconsider is important, and putting this all on staff is not, I don't think particularly, we, we need to examine it because we are the ones who've run, and we're the ones who understand best the flaws in this law. And there, it's a good law, but it needs, it has been sort of gutted by having the Oversight Committee eliminated, and they were the ones who were supposed to update it periodically when they saw problems, and nobody's done that. So I would like us just to reconsider and reconsider our motion next week. And, you know, my intent was to sort of freeze, freeze the collection of any fines until we are able to correct and clarify the Fair Campaign Practices Law. So that's what I would move.
Councilmember Peck and Councilmember Martin, do you have comments on the issue? If we, if we have a motion to reconsider, can we vote and then, okay. Do we have a motion?
Wait a minute. We have a motion on the table. I have to withdraw it at least, so we can have a pure motion to reconsider.
That is true.
I would like to say something.
Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, somebody else has to. Here we go. The reason that I wanted to clarify the motion to reconsider or replace the motion to reconsider is not because I was convinced that we had violated the charter, or God help us, the separation of powers, but because I thought that nothing in this whole brouhaha had been done right, and that there were too many points of view being bandied about, and I would like to just stop that and recognize that we need to behave ourselves and need to be clear on what we're doing, and I don't think the old motion was clear. So I withdraw my motion and move to reconsider the instructions to council on the Fair Campaigns Practices Act.
Second. Councilmember Peck? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously. Councilmember Martin, you're not in the queue, but would you like to have the mic to make a motion?
True enough. Thank you. Yeah, I still would like to add those five instructions, and the council, the staff can, of course, spend as much time as they see fit researching and coming up with some recommendations like the Mayor Protem. I also think that, once that is done, the council would like to roll up its sleeves and discuss among ourselves in a working session, probably with council present in this particular case, if that's allowed, to figure out the shape of, you know, whether we want clarifications. I, in particular, would like to know whether we can somehow incorporate or provide examples of the proper reporting because we obviously had so many versions, good faith versions of proper reporting, and it should be easier, you know? It should, it should just be easier. So I do move that we instruct the staff to prepare some assistance for council to have a discussion on the Fair Campaign Practices Act, including a review of state law, recommendations as to how to clarify the language, which we don't promise to take, assessment of Longmont's penalties in comparison to other comparable municipalities, and any other recommendations they see fit. I'm not expecting a comprehensive analysis of the law, and if it's okay to suspend collection, then let's suspend collection until we have reviewed the law.
That has been, that was seconded by Councilmember Peck. There's nobody else in the queue. Councilmember Peck?
I think what I have to say, Mayor Bagley, can wait till after this vote.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you want to, do you feel comfortable handing that, giving that to the court clerk?
Sure.
Just what was written? Perfect. Awesome. If you can hand that down, that'd be great. All right, if there's no further discussion, debate, questions, or otherwise, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. I believe there was a question in there as well about suspension, or are we waiting on that?
Mayor and Council, I was going to wait on that till bringing it back, but I did want to inform council that I've been in contact with the city clerk twice since last week. She's already starting pulling together the research on comparative jurisdictions and state law. My deputy city attorney comes back next week. He is the one who has been handling Fair Campaign Practices Act, and we have this present waiting for him upon his return. All right, so, and it, I do think it would probably be no earlier than, it would probably be in April when we bring it back to pull it together. We do have an appeal pending, and we're going to have to work on that, too.
All right, so just, Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Just to make it, to clarify it, after this information has been gathered, with the rest of the council's consent, I would like to schedule a work session, I would like staff to schedule a work session after we get this information to discuss the information, how we can amend the fair practice, fair campaign practices, but also the discussion of reinstating the Oversight Committee and what they were charged with to do when they were first, first created, and also including the amount of contributions. And I think that's all rolled into one. Thanks. Oh, wait, do I have councils? Do we, do we agree that we would like all this information and to discuss it in a work session?
Yeah, I think so.
In a public format?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess the only question, I mean, I was just sidebar between, between us council members, and the question I had was, where does this leave the, the motion to collect on the fees, or on the fines for Councilmember Levison, or former Councilmember Levison? And technically, we voted, the motion was to reconsider, and then we made another motion, but we did not address that motion. And I just know that there are people in the audience who, and members of the public, and that is the issue that brought forth this particular motion. And so I'm just pointing out that the previous motion still stands, and we need to do something if you want to change it. Councilmember Finley?
I had a totally other, another issue, so I will yield the floor to anyone who wants to continue to talk about this.
Councilmember Martin?
So Mayor, if I could just clarify one thing you said, so the motion to reconsider brings us to the point in time right before you did vote to not collect.
So we don't need it.
So there's no motion.
So there's no motion. We don't need to do anything. Technically, that's wiped clear.
Correct.
All right, okay, then, thank you.
So, am I still, do I still have the floor?
Yeah, you can have the floor.
Okay. So on the second motion, I believe, although it was not written in, in the hard copy that I have here, that I did amend it on the fly to say, and if it is lawful, to immediately suspend collection.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, Don, can, can you make that amendment to the paper that we pass down to you? Thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Martin, good job. All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I had a constituent who came to me a couple of weeks ago to discuss the inequitable way in which we charge duplex dwellers for water in sewer. As you know, we charge on a tier system for our water in our sewer. Well, the older duplexes only have one water tap and one water meter, but they get charged on the tier for single-family. A lot of the people who have these older duplexes can't afford another water tap or another water meter for another water meter. So I, if council agrees, would like to direct staff to look at a more equitable way to charge duplex residents for water in sewer rather than the single-family tier, adjust that somehow for two families, and bring it, bring us back options to do that. Is that clear? Does everyone agree?
Harold?
So if, I think what would be good is if we bring back the rate structure and, excuse me, fighting a cold, and so we'll bring back, we can bring back an item on the rate structure and go into the details of that piece of the structure and how it applies to those, and then we can take the discussion to look at other options to do that. I think that's how we would do it, so. Bring back the, you know, what I hear you saying is if it's council's directive, bring back the rate structure to look at that specific piece on duplexes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Christensen?
I have a question. I have a question for Harold, given that basically a duplex is a two-apartment building, two, a two-unit apartment building. Are apartment buildings also, how are they charged?
They have the multifamily rate.
Oh.
That comes into play. So I'm going to look to, I think Becky's back there, or Dale, Becky's back there.
Yeah, why wouldn't we just give them a multifamily, too?
Becky's coming forward.
All right.
Hi, Mayor Bagley, members of council. I'm Becky Doyle, PWNR Rate Analyst. So yes, if there's three or more units, it's classified as multifamily. Duplexes have been treated as single-family, and part of that is to allow them to pay system development fees as single-family residences, and also because they, they generally look a little more like single-family homes because they're single structures surrounded by lawn, which is a little more like a house than an apartment complex. Further questions?
Mayor Protem Christensen?
The, we just recently granted a waiver for a new kind of town home called a separated town home over in Blue Vista, and they only have one tap, which also, I think it's a good idea in, in theory, but, you know, this is partly what we used to do in, all over town, and it created all kinds of problems like that. So I'm wondering, those townhomes are individually platted, so how are they classified? Because they're not really a multifamily either, but there are more than three units.
So I think, I think that's part of what we wanted to bring back and talk about the rate structure in general because, and Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, what occurred actually in Blue Vista is that the, the change in the code allowed them to have a common meter for the irrigation system outside of the homes.
Oh, uh-huh.
The homes still have their own individual meters in that situation, so it's different in, in that case. And so I think what would be best is we bring the conversation, and we can go over that piece because there's a lot of details and nuances to this. One of the things that Becky did touch on is that if you classify it as multifamily, when you're looking at duplexes, it changes the system development fees, which are higher on the multifamily piece than they are on the single-family piece, which then starts tying into some of the other conversations about the need for duplexes and homeownership in that realm.
Right.
So I think it would be good is if we brought the entire conversation back for you all and go into those details. If, I still need council direction on that.
Is that a motion, Bonnie? Or do, can we do it by consensus?
We still need to.
A motion would be good.
Okay. I'll bring back my motion. I, I would move, I'd like to direct staff to take, well, I make a, I move that we direct staff to take, bring us back information on the rate fees for duplexes and multifamily in order to find a, a better way to do it.
It's been moved and seconded. No additional queue, so let's go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, with that, that was a lot of, that was a lot of agenda revising and motions for future, yeah, yeah, let's call it a day. All right, City Managers report?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to first call private, or I'm sorry, first call public invited to be heard. Let's start with Barb Brunk.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, Council. Barb Brunk, Resource Conservation Partners, PO Box 1522, Longmont, 80502. I'm here on behalf of the Betcher Annexation applicant, who is on your agenda later this evening under General Business, and just to ask that you consider allowing them to proceed through the process and apply to be annexed into the city, and to let you know that we'll be here later when you discuss this item if you have any questions. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Brunk. Kimberly Gibbs? Didn't I see you on Fox 31 tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of council. My name is Kim Gibbs. I live at 7468 Mount Sherman Road in Gunbarrel. I'd like to speak about the airport annual report. It's Agenda Item 11B in your packet. Want to address a couple of issues, the airport noise complaints, and then the number of operations. So it was reported that the number of noise complaints has increased this year. I think I'm doing something here. We've been through this many times. I've been working on this issue for a while, so I want to point out just the obvious. The noise complaints, whether they go up or down, are not a representation of the level of a of annoyance in the community. It's just completely disconnected from that. If you want to measure the noise, noise monitors would be very useful, okay? That would be an objective measure that I think could provide some useful information. You'll find those noise, those noise complaint numbers under the Noise Abatement section of that report, and I want to point out, there is no noise abatement program going on. There's no regulations for that skydiving operation. Hundreds of citizens have contacted you over the years to complain about the skydiving noise. It's significant, it's relentless, it's a public nuisance. Something needs to be done about it. But would you bother to register complaints knowing that it's a waste of your time? You're gonna take time out of your day to do that. It's a waste of your time because nothing will be done about it, and you'll be subject to intimidation and harassment if you dare to register those complaints. The skydiving operation is creating a public nuisance, noise nuisance, in the community, and I urge you to take it seriously, and let's find ways to solve it. Number of operations, the report says that there were 85,496 operations last year. It's not an accurate number, it's highly inflated, and I just want to put that on the record. But why does it matter? Why do we care how many operations are reported? It matters because that number, that inflated number, is used to justify grants, money for the airport. And it makes it sound like it's busier than it is. Just for some background, Tim Barth, the previous airport manager, reported that there were 99,900 operations annually. That was years ago. That was incorrect. The master plan update revised that downward to 61,000. In our data analysis, though, in 2014, I, we think it's closer to 40,000 operations. I want to summarize or conclude by saying that the real solution to the noise problem at the airport is to restore local control, and you've been very supportive of our efforts to do that. The Polis Amendment is still on the table. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Gail Allen? And Steve, you're gonna be up next.
Hi, I'm Gail Allen. I live in the Greens here in Longmont, and I read in the paper today, the article about the airport's 2017 report and the noise complaint summary report. It identified, as Ms. Gibbs said, an increase in complaints from the previous year, but it also said, a minority of complaints, the majority, I mean, came from two people. Well, I have a real problem with how these complaints are collected and reported by the airport manager and subsequently, City of Longmont, and here's the most important concern. The airport manager and the newspaper specifically identified the names of the people who called in the most complaints. There is no protection of privacy for these individuals, subject to, they're subject to personal or possible personal public ridicule by any extreme airport enthusiasts or owners that resent noise complaints in general. They're subject to possible harm in their jobs or their bosses if they read this, and they also are, you know, very supportive of airport. There's negative consequences by calling these people out by name. I believe it was 2007, the, the previous manager published names and addresses of the most frequent noise complaint callers. They singled them out, they were ridiculed on an airport enthusiast's blog. At that time, I remember that I happened to know someone that was into aviation attorney, and he said, "Well, usually, these kind of reports are summarized, they're presented in aggregate by zones. They can reflect frequency of calls per individual, but they don't have to name the individual." This right of privacy is upheld in many other communities, but my understanding it is not required to be followed by the City of Longmont. There's no need to specifically identify names and addresses. So City Council, if that is indeed the case, perhaps you can direct our institutions that you do have control over to change this. This causes intimidation by our citizens, and that's one of the main reasons that many people do not file noise complaints. Also, it's a cumbersome process to file them online. And last, so basically, I wanted to say, it's been too long that we have dismissed these noise complaints by the public. Posting their names, attacking their privacy, leaves them open to possible retaliation. So I urge the City Council to finally address this issue, and I don't have time to say, but I wanted to comment on Mr. Slater's comments of the three-quarter mile flight pattern is followed on less active days, as quoted in the newspaper, and I challenge that because, frankly, how does he know unless he compiles reports that track those flights?
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. Steve, Mr. Allen?
Steve Allen, also in the Greens. I am here tonight also to express and ask the City Council to take a step back and look at how you go about exposing people when it relates to wanting to express their opinions, especially in a, in an area that is as, as touchy as noise and the relationship associated with that. Singling people out is never a good idea. We see that regularly when it relates to people who get bullied in schools. I don't think we want to be viewed as bullies. I have to agree with Mayor Bagley extensively when he said, "We have to be kinder. We don't want to put undue burden like on Sarah Levinson." I have to compliment you on that. I think you did the right thing. And I, I really do think that we need to realize this. We also need to realize that we have to have, we have to take input from a whole variety of venues when it relates to tracking people who have concerns and views in relationship to what is taking place. We do have a noise problem in Longmont. We have to admit it, and we have to start addressing it to move forward as a community. The simple fact is, is that when I'm at Pelopons, or I'm out at Heil Ranch, or I'm in any one of these places, it isn't, and I, and it is annoying, because when you are out at Heil Ranch, where you would think that would be a place where you would not have an impact from this airport, and it has an extensive impact, and so in essence, you can't call, you can't, you can't put in a complaint, and I, and I know personally, they don't track complaints that relate to phone calls. So in essence, the way in which we do this, we really restrict people's ability to have actual input, and I think that's what we really want here. We want to have transparency and being able to allow people to express their opinion without retribution. Now, I'm gonna spin it off on another note, since we have to go positive, and I will say that anyone who missed BIF in Longmont, Boulder International Film Festival, really missed a wonderful opportunity. It was, it has been here for three years now. I would recommend you pay attention, and you see when it comes out. It is probably one of the best things that you will ever get to interact with. It is easy to get into, and I have to put out extreme compliments to both Jefes and the Roost, who put together a wonderful venue on Friday night, free tacos, free enchiladas, free wine and beer. I mean, what more can you say about a community? So let's just fix our noise problem and go watch the movies.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Love that idea. Donovan Whitehead?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmembers. My name is Donovan Whitehead. I'm at 4901 Nelson Road. And I'm just here to talk about my capstone project for the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, which I know you all are pretty good supporters of. My capstone project is a jazz concert on March 10th at Silver Creek. It's at 2:00 PM. We'll be having bands from Silver Creek, Silver Creek High School, Altona Middle School, Westview Middle School, and a few community bands performing to benefit bringing music to life. And that's a really great local organization that collects instruments every year, and then repairs them and redonates them back to schools that can't afford instruments so that students can play music and can enjoy band and find the relationships in there. And I would just like to invite you guys to come to this event, and I did bring some free tickets and flyers along for you guys.
Sweet.
So, I would just like to invite you guys to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Wendell Pickett, representing the Longmont Housing Authority, I believe, this evening?
What a great act to follow. Nice and positive, and what a great program. My kids participated in that a few years ago, so encourage you all to go. The leadership program is very good there. But as Chairman of the Longmont Housing Authority, I wanted to address you briefly tonight. We've turned a lot of corners, and I wanted to thank you for all your support. I wanted to let you know that as we were asked, we did pass a resolution asking for that continued support of the Housing Authority, and I wanted to inform you that we did do that. I really appreciate the additional time that Karen Roney and Kathy Fedler and Harold Dominguez and the mayor and Polly have all put in. We're meeting weekly and working to resolve the issues of the Housing Authority and moving in a positive direction, so thank you very much.
And thank you to you. Unpaid gig, thanks. All right, Jen Sutton?
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and councilmembers, and congratulations to the new councilmembers. My name is Jen Sutton. I live at 400 Emory Street. And admittedly, I need to listen to what you're going to say later this evening about this issue, but I, I'd like to offer some of my thoughts. It looks like you're voting on a resolution tonight resembling the Martinez case currently before the Supreme Court, essentially prioritizing health, safety, and welfare and environment over promoting oil and gas development and current, current industry standards. If Martinez wins, the COGCC must stop issuing permits until they can prove fracking can be done safely. Though even if Martinez succeeds, decision-making still rests with the COGCC, who is, as we know, tasked with protecting us and promoting the industry, which is a difficult task, not with we the people. So we the people are still subjected to the unjust laws of state preemption, Dillon's rule, supremacy clause, that strip us of our inalienable rights to protect our own health, safety, air, water, and land. I believe we need to move toward adopting a community climate bill of rights, which many of us in Longmont have been working on with CELDF, CELDF being the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund, and which we should be, wish to complete this week. I believe we need to stop trying to work within the existing system that will always be set up to benefit the heavy industry of oil and gas, and instead, change these unjust laws and immoral laws that are in existence now. I'd like to invite you to a town hall meeting next Monday, March 5th, from 6:30 to 9:00 at the Lafayette Public Library with Thomas Lindsay, who is the Executive Director of CELDF, and the Lafayette City Council members will be there. Many of us, also many of us concerned Boulder County citizens, please come and hear about the possibility of enacting a community climate bill of rights in our city and accepting the pro bono legal defense of CELDF that they're offering us. You can be incognito, I will not call you out, you can sit quietly and listen, no one will bother you. This is a watershed event, marking the first time in over five years that council members will meet with CELDF, and...
Can you, can you name, I'm sorry, date, time, and location one more?
Yes, thank you. March 5th, next Monday, March 5th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM at the Lafayette Public Library. I'd be thrilled to have you attend. It would be fantastic. I have CELDF newspapers here, it's their publication. If any of you are interested, I would love to, to give these to you, and thank you for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Former City Manager Gordon Pedro? I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, we have a, that's Monday, right? We have a City Council meeting that night.
Mayor, Council, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive, Longmont. Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue after you've made your previous decisions. The bottom line, I believe, is that there's no person in this room that wants Sarah Levinson to pay a $16,000 fine for a Longmont campaign, fair campaign practices violation, but more importantly, everyone in town wants the City Council to follow the city charter and the rule of law. Residents want and deserve to know they will receive consistent, equal treatment under similar circumstances under any ordinance. That consistency seems to be missing when the City Council can arbitrarily decide to waive penalties for some residents and not for others under any ordinance. That seems to be the residents' definition of arbitrariness. Sorry if I offended any of you by my opinion piece in the city newspaper recently. My intention was not to offend you, it was to get your attention and get the intentions of the citizens of this community that if they don't watch what's going on, they may be surprised, and there's no reason for any of us to be surprised if we have an open, transparent city government. So thank you for the discussion on the Longmont Fair Campaign Practices Act tonight, and your decision to reconsider the direction to the city attorney, and I will assure you that I will not take offense at any of the assumptions and sometimes cheap shots made at me, because I can assure you, none of you know what I am thinking and what I might have made a decision about, and I can assure you, when you assume, you probably are wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Joanne Burton?
Hi, everyone, Joanne Burton, 713 Snowberry. I've been here a couple of times. So I don't have all the facts and figures, all I can speak to is my experience, and I wanted to just see how many people do go over to the wonderful Pele Open Space that has been restored after the flood on a Saturday or Sunday. Just raise your hand if you've been there in the warm, so just one, two. It's, it's really lovely, and yet, right by, in our neighborhood, we have the wonderful airport with the skydivers, and it really has ruined a wonderful experience for people to get away, be close to nature, be by the ponds, and it just so saddens me how much money was put in both sides. The trails are wonderful, the restrooms are beautiful, and up above, you hear mile-high the skydivers. Now, this is winter, this is January, and I look forward to the winter because I get a break from the skydivers, but because it's been a very mild winter, January, Saturday and Sunday, we have the skydivers making all this noise for five jumpers. Now, that is not fair. We tolerate it in the summer, we tolerate it in the spring, April it'll start, usually by October, November, it starts to settle down. Now, this is the dead of winter, but it's beautiful out, we want to be outside, but we still cannot enjoy because it's nonstop. So, I know, I complained once, I spoke to David, David shared his experience, living in need, that he has to deal with the over, the, the jumpers, or whatever he was dealing with, but it's just the nuisance, the noise pollution that we have to deal with on the weekends, it's just, it's just horrible. So, again, this is my experience, I'm only one, we had a lot of people at the farmer's market share their experiences with us, not everyone calls in, I just did it once, and again, I'm asking for you to come, come to Pele on a Saturday or a Sunday and really experience this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Scott Stewart? Scott Stewart.
Evening, Council. Mayor Bagley, members of council. Scott Stewart, 229 Grant Street, Longmont. I'm sure the presentation, the annual presentation from the airport tonight will show the airport in a favorable light. The reality is the airport struggles every year. The city does its best to lessen the burden for the cost that the city charges the airport for their services. The airport is often touted as this huge economic driver for the city. I encourage each of you to look at the hard numbers that pertain to this airport's economic impact on this city. It's often represented as the impact on Colorado and the state, what have you. They collect the airports as a whole and represent them as this huge number. Really look for the numbers that pertain to this city and how the economic, the economic impact of this airport on the city. And try to do it without the multiplier effect that the CDOT uses for, for their presentations. The airport has, has a real effect on the quality of life for those of us on the ground. Please, before moving forward with any, with any plans that will increase air traffic, think about the people on the ground that make up this great city. Not everybody's, you know, thrilled about the pilots or what have you. There's great people at the airport, don't get me wrong, but some of the operation stuff is, it's robbing our weekends. It's ridiculous. FAA money is like an infection. Once you take it, that infection doesn't go away for 20 years. We don't get to control the airport. We don't get to write the rules. We don't get to do anything once we take this. And we're taking this money in order to improve the airport to the tune of 95% of the funds. There's a reason we take it. We can't afford to operate the airport without it. You can't put it, we don't make enough money with this airport in order to, you know, put in a runway or a runway extension. When's enough enough? The continued expansion of the airport brings on additional operating costs and more disruption to the, and unnecessary noise. Please just look at the numbers. They're going to be presented in a favorable way for, for the airport. Let's put them in a true, put them in their true context. The complaints of the airport, the complaints that have come in from the airport, I stopped doing it because you got to log in on the computer, you got to take time away from your Saturday in order to do this, you got to remember your login number, you got to remember your login name, you got to do all this. And really, does it count? And you can request to have your, your complaint to David, and I've done this multiple times, please count me in this count. And his representation is, no, I cannot do that. It can only be done through the, through the login service. Give us some kind of relief. Is, is this airport not big enough? It's a hobby airport. Come on, everybody's piggybacking on the idea that business is coming here because of this airport.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Let's go on and to our consent agenda.
Mayor, and consent tonight, item 8A is ordinance 2018-11, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont.
Don, can I get you to move into the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2018-11 is a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H12, the premises, to Flying Associates of Longmont LLC, the tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 20th, 2018. Item 8B, ordinance 2018-12, a bill for an ordinance approving the amendment to the lease for Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H26. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 20th, 2018. Item 8C is Resolution 2018-25, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for youth core program services in 2018. Item 8D is Resolution 2018-26, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the second interim intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District for increasing the capacity of the Southern Water Supply Project Eastern Phase. Item 8D is Resolution 2018-27, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the third amendment to the fifth interim govern, intergovernmental agreement between the city and the municipal sub-district of the Northern Water, Colorado Water Conservancy District for participation in the Windy Gap Firming Project. Item 8F is Resolution 2018-28, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for grant funding for conversion of biogas from the wastewater treatment plant to compressed natural gas. Item HG is to support House Bill 18-1071 concerning the regulation of oil and gas operations in a manner consistent with the protection of public safety. Item 8H is to oppose House Bill 18-1150 concerning a requirement that a local government that interferes with oil and gas operations compensate persons damaged by the interference. Item 8I is to support House Bill 18-1157 concerning increased reporting of oil and gas facilities. And item HJ is to support House Bill 18-1190 concerning modifications to the Colorado Job Creation and Main Street Revitalization Act.
Do I have a motion? Councilmember Finley.
I would move the passage of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. We doing okay?
Let's go ahead and get started on our, uh, final issue of the meeting. Could you please? So, let's move on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings. Ordinance 2018-09, a bill for an ordinance conditionally proving the HMS Rogers Road annexation generally located between Rogers Road and Nelson Road and between Hoover Road and Airport Road, and zoning the property PUDR, which is planned unit development residential, P public, BLI, business light industrial, and R3, which is residential high density. Turn the time over to the city staff for presentation, and I believe the applicant's here tonight.
Mayor Bagley, City Council Karen Bryant, Planning and Development Services. So, I have a very brief presentation. There's a lot more detail in the communication that City Council received, and so I would be happy to answer any questions. There are also several other staff members here, both from transportation, public works, long-range planning, if you would have any questions for them as well. And as Mayor Bagley mentioned, the applicant is here, and they do have a presentation after mine as well. So, the application before you is an annexation. The City Council has previously passed first and second resolutions for statutory compliance, and those two resolutions basically just said that the property meets the state requirements that it can be annexed into the city if City Council chooses. The property is located, it's about eighty-three acres, and it is located in the red area on the vicinity map. And just really quickly, the annexation, it does meet the review criteria in the City of Longmont's Land Development Code, as well as the statutory requirements. If the annexation is approved, it would just bring the property into the city and zone it and adopt the concept plan. Additional reviews and applications would have to occur for any development to occur on the property regarding platting and development plans. So, this is just, if it comes into the city, it's a, the beginning of a longer property, excuse me, a longer process before they actually break ground up there and start doing anything. There's several more reviews, several more applications that need to go through. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on this, and they did vote to recommend approval on, approval of the annexation. And staff would just like to remind City Council that annexation is discretionary, and it is up to whether we bring the property in. And that is our presentation real quick, so I'll get through stuff. Unless you have any questions for me or staff at this time?
I don't think we have any right now.
Okay.
So, will they, all right? Don? Do you like my stickers?
My name is Don Hinson of HMS Development, 6900 North Seventy-Ninth Street, Ny'watt. I want to thank all of you for allowing us to tell you a little bit more about the community we have planned on Rogers Road. But before we do that, I'd like to introduce you to our team members. I am the H in HMS Development, along with my son John Michael there. The M is Kevin Mulshine. Unfortunately, he had a travel conflict and could not be here tonight. And then the S is the father and son team of Ken and Jake Spencer. There's Jake, and there's Ken. We also have with us tonight our engineer Mickey Laba of the Primantes Group, it's a local engineering firm, as well as Joanne Higgins, our traffic engineer. She's studied the Longmont area exclusively over the years for both public and private We're going to have Mickey and Joanne go over some of the more technical parts of our presentation, and then I will follow with our approach to developing communities, and particularly the Rogers Road community. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mickey.
Good evening. Mickey Laba with the Primantes Group, 625 Main Street, Longmont, 80501. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here. It's been a long process, so been involved with the group when I came aboard over a year ago, so I believe it was in August of last year, just when approvals for planning came in. So, I believe my presentation and Joanne's, you've seen a lot of the information in your packets, but want to go through some of the specifics on that. So, here, again, is just the vicinity in red. You see the property here is the property that's privately owned for the annexation. This is made up of five individual landowners. The Rogers Road right-of-way from Hoover to Anderson Street is also proposed with the annexation of this project. This is a unique annexation in the sense that the application brings six different property owners together for the purpose of a combined effort to annex into the city of Longmont. This essentially may not have happened by individual landowners coming in individually. It'd be a difficult process, so this is kind of a unique annexation. The area of annexation, as far as the property owners, there's five separate property owners making up approximately eighty-three point one-two acres. These individual property owners will be further discussed by Don Hinson later in the presentation. The area owned by Boulder County is the existing right-of-way of Rogers Road, which makes up six-point-three acres. As far as the Rogers Road annexation, this is the right-of-way, as you see in red in the, above here on the screen, from Hoover Street to South Anderson Street, which again is six-point-three acres, and it's approximately thirty-nine twenty, linear feet, three thousand nine hundred and twenty, which is about three-quarters of a mile. First, the north parcels for the annexation. This northwest section is proposed PUDR, which you see highlighted in red, which encompasses, which is, entails single-family neighborhood. This area down here that just highlighted is proposed BLI, which is essentially mixed-use and industrial. And the area highlighted in purple right there is also proposed for public, which is Greenway. The northeast section for the annexation includes the proposed, proposal for PUDR, which again is single-family neighborhood and mixed neighborhood. In regard to the south parcels proposed, we have the, including the zoning here for R3, which is mixed for use, mixed-use employment and high-density residential. Down here, highlighted in yellow, is the BLI proposal with mixed-use employment industrial. I thought this was a good map to include for presentation purposes. This is from the City of Longmont website identifying the current property annexed into the city. And the big, highlighted in red piece is the proposal for HMS Rogers Road. And you can see just from this visual that the property here, HMS, is kind of filling in the gaps with, within the city. Again, here's a bigger blow-up of that map. Just wanted to conclude this to show the surrounding land uses. To the, to the north, we have unincorporated Boulder County. South, unincorporated Boulder County, as well as business light industrial and R3. To the east, we have unincorporated Boulder County, as well as commercial, regional. And west, we have the business light industrial. And again, the proposed zoning for the area in red is PUDR. P for the public, business light industrial, and R3. This here is another map that I thought was useful. It was on the city website, identifying the nearby active developments in relationship to the area in yellow you see for the HMS project. Existing and proposed development in the area is a mix of commercial, retail, and industrial uses and our varying residential densities. The proposed master-planned community with a high, with a high range of residential densities, commercial, and light industrial uses is consistent with the developments surrounding us. The areas in green have recently been, recently been approved through the City of Longmont. What you see there is number seven is the south flat lands annexation one and two. The six, number six there is the Redmond annexation, approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five acres. Number five that you see there is the Anderson RV Storage Concept Plan Amendment. Four is the Fairgrounds Marketplace preliminary plat. And here, the areas in purple are applications under review, with one being the Modern West Annexation Referral, two, the Longmont Storage on Nelson, and three is the Parks at Stonebridge. Here's a clip that we took out just from Envision Longmont, just to say that, show that we're consistent with Envision Longmont. You can see that the feathering from lower densities on the north to the more dense to the south is consistent with what our proposal is for HMS Rogers Road. And again, just some, some clips that are taken right out of Envision Longmont to identify the, we have the single-family neighborhood, primary use is single-family detached homes, typically one to eight dwelling units per acre. We have the mixed neighborhood, primary use, single-family detached homes on smaller lots, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and smaller multifamily buildings. Typically range from six to eighteen dwelling units per acre. With the mixed-use employment, we have a range of employment uses, development that incorporates affordable units, vertical mix of residential and non-residential uses. And then we have also our proposal for the parks and greenways, open space. Put the overall concept plan up here to just go through some of the site characteristics. So, again, the entire project is eighty-three, or the, what you see here is eighty-three point one-two acres. We have two separate planned greenways with multi-use trails, one running north and south, you can see there in the yellow, one running east and west with connection to Longmont's existing greenway system. Two future collectors proposed here, one running north and south, up from the future east-west collector that you see, the red line, up to Rogers Road in some manner. We have a park amenity area that would be proposed with the development, excellent opportunity for recreation. Highlighted there in yellow, you can see some potential detention water quality areas that would need to be worked through through development as we move forward. Again, this, the average density of the proposal here is five to fourteen units per acre, which is consistent with Envision Longmont. The next slide, which I believe everyone's had in their packet, is the multimodal plan. The proposed annexation, concept plan, and zoning demonstrate appropriate transportation and multimodal improvements in addition to connectivity with the existing, existing network of sidewalks, bike lanes, points of access, and adjacent streets. The concept plan also includes a development of greenway trails that is proposed within Envision Longmont. Next slide here, just wanted to put up a preliminary master utility plan that was incorporated with our application. Through the process of annexation, a utility need statement was determined. We worked with the city, our team worked with the city to create a conceptual overall utility plan, identifying existing and proposed water and sewer infrastructure. The city's master water utility plan showed the need of, for a transmission line connection between Airport and Hoover Road. The HMS team development would allow for this transmission line to be constructed within the new east-west collector as, originally, when working with the city, they had conceptually thought that the connection or the new line would be within Rogers Road. Further along, we're showing it here in the city's direction to show the future proposed line, transmission line within the new east-west collector. So, again, the HMS Rogers Road with along, some of the other newer annexations would allow this to happen with the project. The dashed black lines that you see in there identify the existing sewer mains in the area. You can see that the area that we're proposing is well-served with sanitary sewer. The dashed purple lines identify existing water mains in the area. And the solid purple line identify the City of Longmont future water mains. Here, just thought it was important, it's hard to see here, I know it's a big scale here, but a conceptual drainage that was developed along with, during our annexation, sometimes not always talked about, but the thought has to go into that, and a lot of thought came into this one, just initially laying it out. The conceptual drainage analysis was for the purpose of reviewing existing drainage patterns, identifying existing structures, review of previous studies in the area, initiate discussions with adjacent developments, and identify potential detention water quality areas and release points. During the process, this existing conditions map was prepared for the purpose of identifying potential off-site flows, which would need to be accounted for during development process. So, initially, this is a big picture. As we would move forward, we would have to establish a preliminary drainage study that would be in more detail and look through that. Along with existing conditions, we looked at conceptual drainage proposed for the development. A conceptual study was also allowed, is allowed to initiate discussions to begin with adjacent developments regarding regional approach to stormwater runoff and future improvements. I think that's important with a lot of the new developments that have recently been annexed into the city, as far as the Fairgrounds Nova, taking a group and putting everyone together to look at a regional, you know, approach to how we can look at stormwater management. Conceptual detention water quality features were identified based on historic drainage patterns and potential release points. The preliminary design for the project will establish more specific master drainage patterns, parameters such as allowable release rates, pond volumes, available flow capacity, and downstream outfall conveyance. Just conceptually looking at the topography and what would make sense for moving along for development, we've identified some potential locations for stormwater detention ponds and water quality ponds. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne Higgins to touch on the transportation.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Higgins, Primantes Group, 625 Main Street, Longmont. Just wanted to give you a little background, because there's been some comments about traffic studies and whether the city should do their own traffic studies for development, or should developers come in with theirs. The city has a really pretty detailed traffic study requirements. They're identified in the design standards, and they basically set the scope of the study, what needs to be analyzed through meetings, and they set the study area that we have to look at, how far out we go. That's all done before we even go out and undertake the study itself. Last week, you were introduced, I think in a more detailed manner by the city staff on how we analyze traffic. We look at study area intersections for the peak sixty minutes of a day, usually when people are going to work or school in the morning, and when they come home in the evening. Pretty much between four and six PM is the peak of the peak. So, we look at the worst time of the day, and then we add traffic on top of that from the development. And there's intersection levels of service that, that are assigned to gauge how the intersection's operating, and I think Tyler went over this last week. A level service A is not like a A in school, and an F is not like a F in school. It's, A is lower volume, so probably smaller communities have level service A. Urbanized communities have level service D, E, and F, which is just when you take a street like Hoover, forty, forty thousand cars traveling north-south, and it intersects with Nelson, fifteen, twenty thousand cars, you're gonna get level service D, because you have to move all those cars through a pinch point. And it's standard to see level service D at these locations, and that's what the city has for their benchmark. Now, smaller, lower-volume streets, you probably see level service A, B, or C. And, oh, sorry. The level service D is actually a accepted national standard in the Highway Capacity Manual software, and the manual itself, and this, which is called the Green Book, the Bible of designing roads and intersections. So, when you have an urbanized environment like Longmont, you will probably get these operations level service D or better. That's just a little background on operations. In the traffic study, we look at existing traffic conditions, so we go out and collect baseline traffic conditions. Sometimes the city provides that information because they do annual counts, so that's our baseline. And then we look at, when is the project expected to be built and occupied? We had thought 2020. It's taken a little while to go through the approval process, but, so our year was three to four years in advance, so that is now our, we grow traffic to the short-term scenario, which is 2020. We look at the proposed development traffic, and we use Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation rates for the various land uses. Then we add site traffic onto the 2020, which is called the short-term scenario. Then we look at long-term, which is your model, your traffic model where your, all your envisioned Longmont land uses are built out, and what the traffic conditions are going to look like with and without this project. That's just a little background on traffic impact studies. So, the results for the traffic impact study, existing in year 2020, which is the short-term, the background scenario, we look, we determine that all intersections were calculated to operate within level service D overall, which is the city's benchmark standard. There weren't any roadway enhancements done, so it was existing lane configurations, existing signal timing. There are left-turn movements at Hoover and Nelson that are currently operating at level service D, E, or F, and those are typically left turns, because they have to wait the longest at, at the intersection. So, Hoover and Nelson has maybe a hundred-and-twenty-second cycle, from the time the northbound through goes to the time it goes again, that's two minutes. Hundred-and-twenty seconds, and the left turns typically get fifteen seconds, so they're waiting a lot longer. And this is, again, this is common, operations for left-turn movements at major arterial intersections. As Tyler mentioned, the actual operations may be better than that because of the dynamic, or the adaptive signal timing that they've just been instituted. I, I think it's on this corridor, I don't know where else it is in the city, but he was getting level service D operation, so they got, got the left turns out of the E level. And again, in the city's current CIP, there are improvements on Hoover, adding one additional through lane in each direction, and then also adding a dual southbound left-turn lane, and four-laning Nelson. and four-laning Nelson from the west, out to the west from Hoover. And that'll definitely make a difference in the capacity and the level service operations. It'll improve. For this particular site, as Mickey noted, there's a mix of residential and industrial land uses. There's up to 230 single-family dwelling units proposed. Now, this is max, I looked at, not worst case, but highest traffic generation. Up to 810 multifamily dwelling units, so that's townhome condo or apartment, and about 50,000 square feet of light industrial. The land uses are consistent with the envisioned Longmont comp plan land uses, and the resulting traffic is consistent with what has been planned there. The traffic from the site might be a little lower than expected because of the greenway, the location to the transit, stops along Nelson Road, pedestrian bikes at close proximity to work and shopping. So here's the results of the actual study itself for the project. Five new connections to the adjacent street network, so there's, I think, two, two or three connections to Rogers Road, a connection to Nelson Road, and then a connection to Dry Creek. Mickey mentioned multimodal corridor connections for the greenways, bike lanes, and sidewalks. There's that new collector road which is, runs in between Rogers Road and Nelson Road, between Hoover and almost airport, which will relieve both Rogers Road and Nelson Road traffic. It creates a connectivity between the arterials and the existing land uses that are already on the periphery, especially along Hoover. With the site traffic, all the study intersections are projected to function at acceptable levels of service overall, which is level service D. There's slight traffic increases in the level surface operations at the left turn, so they, if it's operating at level service E, continue to operate at level service E with slight increments in traffic delay. This is with no improvements done to those intersections. This is Mickey.
Just wanted to wrap up our part of the presentation with going through some of the annexation review criteria that we use to evaluate our application and consistency with Longmont. The annexation is in compliance with the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965, so our project has more than one-sixth of the perimeter of the requested annexation areas contiguous with the City of Longmont. We are required to have 2,897 feet, and we're providing over 5,000. The annexation is consistent with the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan and complies with all applicable criteria governing annexation stated in the code, in the plan. HMS annexation has demonstrated that it complies with all applicable criteria governing annexations and growth of the city. It will enhance the quality of environment for existing future City of Longmont residents. The property is within the municipal service area or the Longmont Planning Area stated in the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. The proposed area to be annexed is within the city's municipal service area, Longmont Planning Area stated in the plan. The property is capable of being integrated into the city in compliance with all applicable provisions of the Longmont Municipal Code. The proposed HMS annexation has demonstrated that it's capable of being integrated into the city in compliance with all applicable provisions of the Municipal Code. At the time of development of the area proposed to be annexed is completed, there's reasonable likelihood that the capacity will exist to adequately serve residents or users of such area with all necessary utilities and facilities in appropriate urban level of service. The traffic volumes represented associated with the construction and build-out of the proposed project have been analyzed on the existing short-term 2020 and build-out, I believe that's 2040, a network to identify any potential transportation impacts. With identified improvements in place, the site traffic volumes can be served by the adjacent roadway links and intersections. Pedestrian bicycle access to and from the HMS site is planned via internal sidewalk connections to adjacent roadways and on-street bike lanes. The proposed zoning is appropriate based on consideration of the following factors. The proposed zoning is consistent with the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan designation of the property. The proposed land uses are consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district, and the proposed zoning is not improper spot zoning such as relatively small island or land that is affordable, privileges not afforded surrounding properties. The concept plan shows the following: appropriate land use, utility, and transportation design, including multimodal transportation access, given the existing and planned capacity of those systems. Mitigation of potential adverse impacts in surrounding properties and neighborhoods, as well as mitigation of potential adverse impacts on the environment. The requested zonings are consistent with envisioned Longmont updated to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. These land use categories allow for high-quality master plan community. Two planned greenways through the development provide excellent opportunity for recreation with the community, in addition to access to unlimited recreational opportunities outside of the community through connections to Longmont's extensive greenway system. Employment centers are nearby, and essential services are located along Hoover and Nelson Roads within easy-walking distance. Existing road networks, together with the future developments, local and collector roads will provide residents with access to excellent transportation system. The annexation boundaries are configured such that the property can efficiently serve, be served by utilities, facilities, and services. The annexation will not limit the ability to integrate surrounding land into the city or cause variances or exceptions to be granted in the adjacent land as annexed or developed. The proposed HMS Rogers Road annexation can efficiently be served by utilities, as we've demonstrated, facilities, and services. It will allow for future unincorporated Boulder County properties to be integrated through the city's three-tier process without causing future variances or exceptions, as well as the annexation of Rogers Road from Anderson Street to Hoover Street will allow for integration of future properties to be annexed into the City of Longmont. HMS Rogers Road annexation has demonstrated is in compliance with the City of Longmont Review Criteria applicable to the application for annexation, concept, and zoning. Thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Don Henson.
As we went through those annexation criteria, we were instructed that those needed to be read into the record, but I hope we can get a little bit more exciting on the next part of our presentation, if you're still with us. I really want to talk about community development, but I thought it would be important that we discuss a little bit on how we got here. I know there was some discussion about the size of this annexation, that it should be smaller, that 80 acres is too big, and what I'm about to show you is one reason why it makes sense to do a larger rather than a smaller annexation. When we first started evaluating properties of this area, and we settled on this 30-acre piece, we met with city staff, and one of the things we heard loud and clear from city staff is the east-west road was important to them. And that's this road right here. They want a connection from Hoover over to airport, and they also want a bike connection over from Hoover to airport, mainly because it's one of the few east-west connections. You can't ride on Rogers, there's nothing on Nelson right now, I understand they will be in the future, but this will provide a bikeway, an east-west connection, to get to the bike underpass over there on airport. And when you look at it a little more from the city's perspective, it was, it was a little, a little bit easier to understand why they wanted this east-west road. This is a map of the city's existing and future road network, and you can see the yellow circle that shows the area we're talking about, and this is a blow-up of it. And if you look at the yellow line, that's the east-west road that is planned. East-west road's important because it allows traffic to divert from Hoover and make it over to airport to head north, giving another north-south connection, and relieving traffic from that Hoover-Nelson intersection. In addition to that, with the other two planned roads, for them, it allows a second north-south connection other than Hoover. And then, if you keep going with Dry Creek, you get a third north-south connection. So in the city's master plan, these collector roads are meant to relieve traffic on some of the arterials, and the city really was pushing to try to get the east-west road built. So they asked us to take a regional approach and look at all the properties in the area, see what we could do. Now, just for a minute, reviewing the city's policy on collector roads, if you have a planned connector road, collector road, adjacent to your property, you're required to build it when you develop. That's at your cost, no funds from the city. You may be reimbursed in the future if the property owner on the other side develops, then you have a chance of getting some of your money back. And the city also may allow a buyout of that obligation if the building of the road is not feasible. And that is simply what happened in the Rogers Road area that we're talking about now. If you look at this, if you don't take a regional approach, if you don't have a large piece of property, and this is not what actually happened, but it's an example of the piecemeal approach, and that's not a criticism of anyone, it's just the way things have happened, each property owner has their own timing, their own priorities, but if you look at this, if that property was annexed, technically he's required to build 150 feet of a collector road, along with utilities. A road to nowhere, it really makes no sense. And then the next guy, if he comes along, he builds his 150 feet, and the next guy comes along, he builds his 200 feet. I think you can easily get the message that the piecemeal approach, you may get ultimately a road built if you keep on that, unless you have a guy who says, "I don't want annex." And then what do you do? It's really hard to build roads this way, and not only that, I can imagine being in Chris Huffre's shoes and trying to piece together the utilities in that road, and having all these different connections over a period of 10 or 12 years while all of this happens. Not only that, but driving down a road with that many joints in the pavement couldn't be fun. So, there's got to be a better way. And so we started talking to some of the property owners in the area. The first one we talked to was Mr. Camrazel. Now, he's farmed his property for years, and he's now ready to enjoy his golden years, and so he agreed to be part of the project and sell his property. We then met with David and Deanna, excuse me, Mr. Camrazel is in the audience tonight. Would you mind letting everybody know, and I think his son's here too. Thank you, Mr. Camrazel. The next one was David and Deanna Cassidy. Again, they're longtime farmers on the property, they're ready to move on, they're in the audience tonight, too. Then we talked to Stephen and Patricia Trump. Stephen is a former Longmont Fire Chief. He wants to retain his home there, but he has more property than he wants. He'd rather keep up with his grandkids than keep up with his property, so he's going to stay on board, but he's selling part of his property. And also, we have Mr. Stephen Tebow. He's well-known for his real estate investments, and also is Tebow Family Medical Pavilion and the Rocky Mountain Cancer Center, and I believe Mr. John Mahaffey's here on Mr. Tebow's behalf tonight. So, these are the property owners we have assembled to try to take a regional approach to our project. Now, what that allows is, this is a current, or almost current, annexation map. The two parcels I just clicked on, they were annexed in the not-too-distant past. You have a third parcel, I think, is under consideration right now. These three parcels can provide the right-of-way for the westerly link of the east-west road. Then on the easterly side, we have the Fairgrounds Marketplace, they're currently in annexation right now. They'll provide the easterly portion of the east-west road. You can see the missing piece. With this annexation, we'll be able to connect the links and provide not only the road, but the bike path on the east-west road. That's what we mean by regional approach, and that's why we went and assembled these pieces of property. And I want to say, I know Mickey's been involved in the project for a year, this has been a, probably about a three-year process to get to this point. These property owners have hung with us, and I want to personally thank all of them for having the patience to work with us to try to get us to this point. This is, it's hard with everyone having different priorities to be able to hold this type of assemblage together, and it's a credit to the people who are on the property. Now we can talk about something a little more fun, building communities. And that's our approach, a lot of people think you build subdivisions. We approach it a little different, we like to build communities. We look a little bit deeper than lines on a map or water and sewer. What does that mean? That means when we look in an area to develop, we look for quality of life. We look for, is this where we would want to raise our families? Is this where we would want our parents to spend their golden years? And that summed up really three broad categories: live, work, play. And I'll go into those a little bit. First with the live. One of the basic things, if you set any sales model very long, you'll hear when people come in to buy a home, they want to know where the nearest grocery store is. They want to know where the services are. And so, we take that same approach. When we're looking at a piece of property and we evaluate it, you know, all the engineering stuff, that's got to work too, but our big approach is, is this property, will this provide a good quality of life for the people who live there? And so, we evaluated, okay, what about grocery stores? You have the Super Target within the stone's throw. You have King Super also within a stone's throw of the project. There's a Sprouts within a bike ride or a brisk walk. And then you have Whole Foods, which is also within a quick bike ride or a close walk. And that's just the four right off the bat. There are others out there, I think there's a Sam's, and there's some other grocery stores out there. We stopped counting at four because we can check that box, there are plenty of grocery stores for the community. What about the other services needed for day-to-day life? The Twin Peaks Mall, urban renewal area, Village at the Peaks, has everything from Home Depot to hair salon, medical offices to movie theaters. So, this place is well-served in services that help you live your everyday life. And what that means is, you're not getting in your car and you're driving 5, 10, 20 miles to get somewhere. These are all right next door, it shortens your trips if you go in a car. It shortens your trips if you go in a car, or it allows you to walk or take a bike. So, that's important for community development. I mentioned the retail sale, retail area and services. What about schools? If you're gonna raise a family, you, you gotta know where the schools are. We've got that covered, too. Altoona Middle, Blue Mountain Elementary, and Silver Creek High School, all within a two-mile radius. So that's covered. In addition, Front Range Community College is about two miles south. When it comes to work, are there employment opportunities nearby? You have AstraZeneca, probably about three quarters a mile away. They just reopened, and they're hiring people. You have Seagate. It's also within a mile and a half. That's more important. You can bike, even if you drive to the employment, you're not getting on the major arterials. You're close by, you've got work right near your home. And then you also have Xylance, and those are all kind of the high-tech jobs. But in addition to that, in, in the, the service area just to your right, there, there are job opportunities for people there who maybe they're not high-tech, but, but there are job opportunities there, manning the stores, the cashiers, the stocking the food. There, there are plenty of employment opportunities, all within walking and biking distance of the project. And then it comes to play. You can't work all the time. What about recreation and entertainment? You have Village at the Peaks, plenty of restaurants, movie theater. You also have Willow Farm Park, Boulder County Fairgrounds, Rogers Grove Park, all walkable and bikable. In addition to that, you've got two legs of the Lykan's Gulch Greenway converging on the site. You also have a north-south and an east-west, or a north-south plan and an east-west plan, bikeways through the property. So, the community is well-served for recreation, for entertainment, at the nearby Twin Peaks Mall, and the numerous parks in place, along with the greenways, and obviously the bike lane and the, the bike trails. So, if you summarize our analysis of the property, you will find it's well-served with adjacent retail services, employment, and schools. Most elements for a high-quality-of-life community are already in place. And that's not always the case when you develop property. Sometimes you have to build a school, sometimes you have to build a retail. This is, this is infill. So, our job is to concentrate on providing the housing, some enhanced recreation on-site, and completing the greenways and the east-west collector road. So let's talk about, a little bit about what will be in the project itself. Obviously, the pocket parks and neighborhood parks are a no-brainer. The kids love to go play there. It's a place where the parents socialize, so that's, that's a key element that we will include in our community. The Lykan's Gulch Greenway. The north leg's more linear, which you'll see in a minute, but provides connection to St. Verane. And the west's greatest opportunity for recreation. And there you go with the, the north leg and the west leg. We think the Lykan's Gulch Greenway will be the crown jewel of the community, 'cause it's so wide, it'll be a really neat place, and there's a lot of opportunities for recreation there. And some of the elements envisioned are grassed, open space recreational areas within the community, picnic tables and play structures, and a dog park. That's my lab, Ellie May. She wants to build a dog park. Maybe a pool and a clubhouse. And let's talk a little bit, I know we've heard it before, but I'll go through really quickly because transportation is a hot button. I want you to understand that we don't just build inside the boundaries of the community. There are a lot of transportation contributions we make to help the transportation system of the city of Longmont. East-West Collector Road, Fordham Collector, the Anderson Collector, Dry Creek, Lykan's Gulch Greenway North Leg, Lykan's Gulch Greenway West Leg. And in addition to that, with the impact fees, transportation, they're projected to be between one and two million contributed to the transportation system. And this is just a pictorial representation of the east-west road, Fordham, and the collectors on each side, as well as the greenways. Now let's talk a little bit about the housing within the community. We'll have the, the less-dense housing up towards Rogers Road. And then to the south, it'll get into more single-family detached, followed by probably condos and townhomes as we get closer to the commercial development that's further to the east, and then probably some more townhomes and condos on Mr. Tebow's piece. Single-family detached homes, attached townhomes, condos, and probably a long shot of apartments, but we think condos is the way to go for workforce housing, 'cause that's what we shoot for, is, is fee simple and for-sale housing. And this is some examples of some of the townhomes that have been in our projects. This is an example of townhomes fronting on what we call a pedestrian boulevard, to give you an idea of the community and the recreation and all. Talk a little bit about the Longmont housing shortage. This is from Envision Longmont, and I'll do a blow-up of it. It essentially says, by 2035, there's a demand for 9,366 housing units. And if you developed out according to the 2003 Longmont Comprehensive Plan, you're 1,682 dwelling units short. So, there is a need, which we're gonna see in Envision Longmont, to increase the density. And one of our favorite subjects: workforce housing. Right now, 63% of Longmont workers live outside of Longmont and drive in each day. Obviously, some of that is by choice. Some people just like living out. But I suspect a major portion of it is because a lot of people can't find affordable housing within Longmont. And those are the people, there are nurses, there are law enforcement, there are firefighters, there are schoolteachers. Those are the people that we mean when we say workforce housing. Those people, right now, I, I'm afraid a lot of them are workforce commuters. Again, they're the people that teach our children, protect us, nurse us when we're ill. They shouldn't have to leave Longmont after their shifts due to lack of housing. And that's where, that's our goal in this project, is to really concentrate on workforce housing. We wanna see these workforce commuters become workforce homeowners. And that's, that's our, that's our full focus on this project. And workforce housing, we saw a very interesting connection between workforce housing and senior housing in one of our other projects. And that was, we had the single-family homes where the young families moved in, and then we had condos. And we had thought the condos were targeted for young singles or young couples, professionals just starting out, and that was a part of the market. But one thing we didn't expect was probably 50% of our sales in there were to seniors. And it wasn't just any seniors. A lot of them were the parents of the kids who bought the single-family homes. And so we learned something there. That was a really neat phenomenon that we saw, because if you, if you think about it, if you've got grandparents living close to the kids and the grandkids, that just makes a really close-knit community, allows the grandparents to be involved in the kids' lives. If, if the kid's sick at school and the parents at work, the grandparents are there, they can take him to soccer practice if, if the parents have to work late. It's just a neat phenomenon, so it's something that, when we say workforce housing, we really think we're gonna see seniors also in those same homes, because they're affordable and a lot of seniors are on fixed incomes. Now, Envision Longmont was started in 2015. It was a blueprint for what is to happen in Longmont over the next 10 to 20 years. Thousands of people participated, and it was a lot of effort. It was a two-year process. It was adopted in, I think, 20, a one-year process, adopted in 2016, and it provided a blueprint. So, after we made our evaluation of the property, we asked the question, okay, that's what we think. What does Envision Longmont think? Envision Longmont said, "Increase share of development in areas of change." And by areas of change, they mean areas that are appropriate for development. Well, this certainly was marked on the map in Envision Longmont as an area of change. Check the box. Envision Longmont said, "The only way we're gonna solve the housing shortage is increase density." We certainly are doing that. Check the box on that one. They said they wanted increasing housing diversity, more attached housing. We plan to provide that. We can check the box on that one, too. Increase or maintain the percentage of residents within a half-mile of a park, greenway, or recreation. That oughta be a double-check with, with the green, two greenways going right through the property. Create livable centers. And I'm not gonna go into reading that, but essentially said the same thing we talked about. You have employment, you have services, you have schools. You have all the, the things you need for a high-quality-of-life, they're either within walking or biking distance of the project. That's what Envision Longmont said we should do, so we can check that box. And perhaps, if this were David Letterman, as we started in the top 10, this would be number one. Envision Longmont said, in their report, "The greatest opportunity to accommodate future development," the very first area they issued, they listed, was the Hoover Street corridor. So we'll check that box, too. So summarizing, master plan communities provide the most efficient use of infrastructure. I think we talked about that versus piecemeal. Area roads a function at the appropriate level of service. Several million dollars of construction to Longmont's collector road system. And I, I wanna stress, that collector road system is non-project traffic mainly. Some of our per-traffic will use it, but we'll only use a small percentage of the capacity on those roads that we're building at no cost to the city of Longmont. I think that's important to realize. Major east-west connection for bikes and autos, two greenways, smart growth, development where services are in place, relieve Longmont's housing shortage, provides workforce housing. So, as we conclude, I think as you guys are, are contemplating whether to vote to approve this project, I think you have to ask, really, two questions. The first question is, considering that your own study, your own blueprint says that the greatest opportunity to accommodate future development is the Hoover Street corridor. If not here, then where should we develop? And the second question to ask is, after three years in the process to get to this point, probably another two to break ground, and a land assemblage that would be difficult to put together again, and it's, that land assemblage is the reason we can do all of the improvements that we just talked about. If not now, then, then when? And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions along with our, our engineering staff. And I, I wanna thank you, Mayor Bagley and Council, for indulging us. I realize that was a rather lengthy presentation. I tried to get through it as quickly as possible, but I, I really wanted you to understand what community development means, and have you take a little peek into our world and, and see the way we, we approach projects. So I, I hope it wasn't too long.
Counselor, well, it was too long, but it's over now. Counselor member, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I wanna thank HMS and Kevin Mulshine and Dave Emerson in particular for humoring me on understanding the transportation model, and waiting until we got that transportation update. And I, and I, again, wouldn't explain what my concern was, and it will always be, is that when we have E and F intersections, and it's in the CIP but unfunded projects, I wanna make sure that I understand that when we're putting over 1,000 people on the arterial roads in an unfunded project, that we are going to match, we're going to, we're gonna make it all happen, the intersections. And that was answered, and by Tyler Stamey and the transportation update. So, I just wanted to thank you, your whole group, for, for humoring me and letting me take the time to understand that.
Well, ma'am. Oh, no, you've spoken for an hour and a half. No, just kidding, go ahead.
I, I just wanna say, thank you for, for willing, being willing to learn, and, and anytime we can help any of you understand more about what we do, I think that's a plus.
Mayor Protem Christensen.
Yeah, I would like to thank... Sorry, I would like to thank you, too, for, this is a good presentation. It was long, but you're actually talking about community development, and that's really important. That's, often we get somebody that comes in and they build a development, then they get, they take some fees, but they really aren't building a community. And I, I appreciate the fact that you're building a range of housing, a range of price points, including employment, greenways. It really is, it is community development. So I had a few questions, and one of them was about the drainage. I, I've talked with the people up around Rogers Road, and the people who are in that little configuration just to the east, where Dry Creek Road would run right through their property if it went further north. I've been assured that it's not gonna run further north, it's gonna stop at about halfway up. So I just wanna make sure that that's true, that it's not going to be running right through the property of the people up on Rogers Road, who really bought their property so they could do small-time farming.
I, I can assure you, we have no plans to extend Dry Quee Creek. There is an obligation that we have to contribute to the cost for, for the portion along, but I, I think staff, to their credit, is working on some alternatives on that. They're working with other developers that I'm aware of. So I, I think that's a work in progress, and I, and I feel sure that sooner or later there'll be a, a good solution to that problem.
Right, and you're, you're actually further to the east, so you have exits and entrances that are not affecting that.
Yes, we, we don't depend on that portion of Dry Creek. Our portion of Dry Creek is to the south of the east-west.
Okay, so the other thing, it looks like you've done an extensive amount of work on the drainage, but I, I'm pretty sure you know that all the people on Rogers Road right now are pumping day and night to keep the water out of their houses, so you do realize that's a big problem for them.
I, I do, and, and, you know, we are, are, we will continue to do that to make sure that we don't negatively impact them, and hopefully we'll be able to do some improvements that'll positively impact them. I know, there, there may be some of the ditch laterals that, that could have an effect on that. I am not an expert on ditch laterals and, and how that old, that whole area is affected, but I've, I've heard anecdotal comments that, well, when the ditch laterals and some of the irrigation is gone, that it, it may help that situation.
Yeah, and you, you've got a lot more drainage things planned, so that might, that might actually help a lot of things.
Yes, and just keep in mind, this is, this is just, this is just to get to the starting line. So, we've got a lot of design to do, and, and there're gonna be some issues we have to work through. to work through with staff and some of the adjoining landowners, and we're prepared to do that.
So, the other thing is your, your greenway goes along the creek. Isn't that right, the main portion of it?
It, it goes along, there are actually two.
I know, there's one north, south.
Ditches that, that it goes along.
Oh, okay.
I guess you could call them creek, but they're both, I, I think it's the, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the ditches, but I bet you Ken can tell me.
Lycan's Gulch?
South Flatt and Niwat.
The South Flatt and Niwat.
Oh, okay, okay. That, I think that's good, too, because not only is it more picturesque, but it also helps mitigate for floods and things like that. Could you talk a little bit about you, you're going to be working with Habitat. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we have been working with Habitat for a couple of years now.
Okay.
And not only that, but in a former life, we actually built one of their houses with my former company I was with. We built a house in three days.
Wow.
So, that, that was a neat project to be in, involved in. But yeah, we, we, we were working with Habitat. We will continue to work with Habitat, you know, whether it's this project or another project. And, you know, there's, there's also, I know some of you involved in the Veterans Village. If there's an opportunity where that can work within our project, that's fine, but I purposely did not bring that up because, number one, we're not driving that ship. There's a group that's doing the Veterans Village and we, we, they need to make those decisions. And quite frankly, we're just not far enough along to really understand all of their needs. But we, we have a heart for housing, whether it's veterans, whether it's Habitat, whether it's workforce, and move-up housing. There'll be some move-up housing in there, but our main focus is workforce.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate the fact that you're committed to homeownership because that is a huge portion of solving that affordability crisis, uh, crisis.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. And I also want to compliment you on this. This is a beautiful, forward-looking development. I have a couple of questions that I honestly think are for the city more than they are for HMS, if that's okay. Councilmember Peck already touched on the traffic explanation, and I do have to say that, that the multimodal plan is very attractive. The, the sticking point that I have, and maybe I'm just slower, but that's, you know, I'll own that. We do have those two major street widening efforts that are unfunded in the capital improvement plan right now. And the way that makes the traffic study look, I think, can be summarized as it gets worse before it gets better. What does the city have to say about the possibility of, of pulling that funding in or, or, you know, doing something so that it doesn't get quite as bad before it starts getting better?
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, I'm Dale Rademacher, General Manager of Public Works Natural Resources. Appreciate the question. It's a, we had a little discussion about that last week and, and that is a question and a, a direction that you get to give us every year when we come forward with the capital improvement program, which we will be doing once again this year as part of the 2019 budget process. And so, as we said last week, the, the street fund is currently challenged with regards to some of the flood recovery work that we have underway. That is, is really also a challenging issue for the community. And I, I do believe that through the work that we do in looking at traffic frequently and in particular in some of these areas of the city that are experiencing growth and trying to program improvements in a timely manner so as to not further aggravate traffic, I, I believe that can be successful. I, I'll admit it's probably not perfect, but I believe that coupled together with, again, our annual look at the, at the street fund and at the, the overall CIP, I think that's something we will certainly present to you and, and take your direction ultimately on whether or not something should be brought forward sooner than what we're currently showing or should be traded out potentially without, with another particular project. So, that's the value of the CIP, to be able to do that.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I guess my other question is, is more of a remark than a question, but I, I would still like to hear your thoughts on it. The other potential problem is the one we've heard about from, from several residents this evening already. You know, that airport is, is just aimed like a shotgun site at, at this development. And I think I would like to hear from, that there's nothing we can do about the, the sound level for now outside on the greenways, but can, can the dwellings be designed, tilted, aimed, insulated to, to, you know, anticipate the noise levels that might occur in this area?
I think that's a question for the.
Yes, yes. So, and have you anticipated that? I, I realize that I may be a little early in the, in the process, but still, please.
I am not sure I would have any confidence in that you could angle a home or whatever to, to ameliate the, the noise. But, you know, is, I've done this a long time and there are no perfect sites to develop. I, I will say that, you know, staying in Niwat, I hear the train go by. If you live near a highway or interstate, you're, you're going to hear road noise. If you get in an urbanized area, you will have some kind of noise or other to deal with. One thing we do, though, and it's, it's, in fact, it's a requirement, on the plat, there is a big note that tells everyone buying there that it is near the airport. In addition to that, at the sales contract, every home buyer signs a disclosure. It's not just something that's buried in the covenants, it's disclosure saying, I understand I am buying near the airport. But from the, the speakers I've heard tonight, I'm not sure near the airport really makes any difference. It sounds like the noise issue we're hearing is, is pretty much as, if it's not citywide, it covers a wide swath of the city from, from some of the comments we've heard. So, if you want to build homes in Longmont, I think it's bigger than any one project or one development. I, I think it's something that the city has gone, either come to grips with or, or not, and they, they've got to balance the competing interests there. So, I, I wish I could give you a, a magic portion that says if we face every house north, then problem solved, but I really can't.
Thank you.
All right. Then before we open it up for public hearing, Councilmember Finley, you're in queue. All right. Then let's go ahead and open it up for public hearing, starting with Ron Camerzel. Saw your name on a map somewhere today.
The what? Couple hours ago.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members.
And if you could, if you could start with your, everyone start with their name and address, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ron Camerzel. I reside at 10704 West Ontario Place in Littleton, Colorado, 80127. I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of my dad, Don Camerzel, who owns a farm located at 9170 Rogers Road as part of the planned annexation. I'm also speaking on behalf of my brother, Don, who's also here. I really appreciate the opportunity to address the council tonight on this important matter. My dad and mom purchased this farm back in 1984 and they put everything they had into it. This was a chance for my dad to return to his roots because he grew up on a farm near Brighton. We have actively farmed this property for over, over the past 34 years, raising livestock at times, but primarily raising hay for horse owners throughout Colorado. Our entire family has worked this farm, including the grandchildren. We have a lot of wonderful memories here. Over the past 20 years, my dad has been approached by a number of developers and has had numerous contracts for the sale of his farm, and all of them have fallen through for one reason or another. The term that comes to mind for me is big hat, no cattle when referring to a lot of these developers. They either didn't have the financial backing or the experience or expertise to see a project like this through. This time, though, it has been a different experience with Mr. Spencer and the HMS group. They have worked very hard leveraging the cooperation of multiple landowners and developers to put together this proposed development and annexation. He has the, they have the financial capacity to do this thing the right way. They have a proven track record in the Longmont area as responsible developers, and they live right here in Boulder County. This has been an agonizing process for my dad to work through. It's been more than two years of being in limbo and experiencing the ups and downs that go with the sale of a piece of your life and the political roller coaster ride added by the annexation process. Today from our farm, we are surrounded by Home Depot, Target, apartments, homes, storage units, open space, and industrial properties. Indeed, we are no longer in the country like we were 34 years ago. I guess that's progress, but whatever you'd like to call it, the, the time has come to bring this area into the bosom of the city. And you have a unique opportunity to do it with a thoughtful approach and a responsible developer that will ensure alignment with the vision of your long-term city plan. City officials have stated repeatedly that the city needs quality workforce housing. This proposal addresses that need. The annexation proposal has been referred to the city council with the unanimous approval of the planning commission. We've been at this long enough to know that you have a unique opportunity here to do something really great by approving the HMS Rogers Road annexation. My dad is 86 years old and he's waited long enough. It is time for the leadership of this city to make the right decision for everyone involved, approval of the HMS Rogers Road annexation. And therefore, we respectfully ask you to approve this annexation proposal tonight. And I want to just thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Camerzel.
Thank you.
Steve Allen, you're back up. You're, you're first, Gail. Might be a surprise, but you're next.
I want to speak on this for two, three reasons, actually. Number one, somebody ran on the topic of traffic in the area. I have to mention that I moved here eight years ago. My average commute to where I worked was 32 minutes. It is now 47. And it's directly related to slowness now on, on the Parkway, 119, as I'm leaving Longmont. And the simple fact is, is every one of those stoplights now, at Niwat, at airport, I am waiting extra amounts of time. The simple fact is, there is a traffic-related problem. I want to remind Marcia that she, she ran on the fact that this was an issue. And I don't think just simply building more dense housing to solve an issue is really addressing everything that we need to look at. If we're going to go after this, we need to look at this solidly and say, we have to get this light rail system in here. Let's be realistic. I cannot take another major development and have my commute time go up another 10 minutes. It's just not practical, and there are lots and lots of people, and I have to take them a little bit to task on this concept that says 63% of the people commute in to Longmont to work because the traffic that I see goes out of Longmont in the morning. It does not come back in. The traffic coming north up that road looks sweet. The traffic going south does not so much. So, I think it's really important, if you look at this development and you look at things in the, in the future, and it looks very pretty, but here again, don't forget that aspect. The other thing is, don't forget 1997, 2013, and what happened in Houston. Obviously, the 1996 Big Thompson Flood, they said would never happen again. We got that covered. 2013, big surprise. Houston almost wiped out a city. Now, they account a major part of their problem associated with the fact of their building and covering up every single piece of property with dense housing. And the more you pave it over, the more you're going to have flood-related issues. Let's, don't forget this. Moving forward, all of these properties that you're talking about annexing and bringing in, you want to be very cognizant of the fact that, yes, it's very attractive, yes, it looks nice, but you have two major issues that have never been effectively really dealt with in this area. One is the flooding that will happen again, and two is the transportation system that we were promised and has never been effectively addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Gail? Working on the rail.
Hi, Gail Allen, again, from the Greens here in Longmont. And the previous speaker was incorrect. We've been here for 12 years, not eight.
Let the record reflect.
Yes.
That her husband.
Was wrong.
Is wrong.
Okay. Well, I just actually wanted to listen to the presentation because I didn't know all the facts. And what struck me was that it came out to be about 70 to 75%, if my numbers are right, high-density apartments, possibly condos and attached housing. And I thought, seems to me that the majority of new growth coming on west of Hoover, well, at this, so far to date, has been this high-density. If you look at what's west, the west side of Airport Road from Nelson, heading south towards 119, it's a sea of high-density. And is that the way we want to change the character of this part of the city? Then they talked about Traffic D, and that is standard for urban areas. Do they compare it to Denver and Chicago urban areas? Being a small city that we are, would we, do we need to be compared to that high-density or maybe we should be expecting a lower density, except on our major, major Hoover Road, which is really a drive-through as they drive further north out of our city? Also, high-density, it was spoken to by Marcia, it's part of the airport influence zone, and what that really means is high-density noise complaints in the future. So, is it really the best use to put high-density there? I think you'll have trouble with any housing. I don't think the orientation will make any difference, how you set up the housing. And if the gentleman who's building wants to, he can put in expensive sound mitigation as he builds his house. I don't know if that's what he really wants to do. So, I, I just bring that up for your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening, David Emerson, 1152 Twin Peaks Circle in Longmont here, and I'm also the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity of the St. Rain Valley. So, I just very briefly want to speak in support of this annexation. Habitat for Humanity develops, builds homes or home for lower-income folks. And over the last several years, we have been familiar with working with HMS. They have been absolutely fantastic in helping us think through more complex developments. And they have also brought us in early on this type of annexation, which is very important, just talking to us about a small piece of this property, but significant to us. Habitat is, we consider ourselves very good builders, designing homes, that type of thing, and building those homes inexpensively. When it comes to land development, obviously, there are a lot of complicated things going on there. But, so to be invited into that conversation early allows us to really work to our strength and let the developer work to their strengths. And we have been just incredibly impressed on what they've been able to do and the council they have given us on a wide range of projects. So, we believe this is a good opportunity and would hope that it gets approved for more discussion when it comes to some of those more pressing issues like traffic and that type of thing. Thank you.
Mr. David Cassidy. Mr. David Cassidy?
My name is David Cassidy. My wife, Deanna, and me live at 9250 Rogers Road, which is part of the annexation. My parents purchased the farm back in 1960. That was before Rogers Road was put through to Airport Road now. We farmed that property. I still farm it. Dad passed away in '06. My mom passed away in '02. In 2006, I become the ditch superintendent for South Flat Ditch. My dad, in 1976 is when I started working with dad, and I become superintendent in 2006. My mom and dad have cooperated with the city when they was alive, as the city has grown out to our farm, past our farm, and all around it. My mom and dad cooperated with the city when they put the sewer line in our back pasture about 20 years ago. It come through my place and it come through Don Camerzal's. In the mid-'80s, the city put our farm and Camerzal property in the comprehensive plan when they widened Hoover Road. That was like in '85. In '93, they built a Target store, and in '95, Home Depot in my back pasture. Dad worked, my dad Jerry, worked with people from Home Depot and that, because he was the president of the South Flat Ditch at the time. Last year, you guys approved apartments in the other side, which would be the south side of my property, three-story apartments. Our whole family has worked with the city on all these projects, because we knew that, you know, someday, the 15 acres that we've got would not be feasible to farm, raise cows on, or whatever, and that it was in the comprehensive plan, and that mom and dad wanted to move someplace else when this happened. So, now that HMS Company has gotten all five of the people together to do this annexation, that's what we're asking for you to do that. I'm a native of Longmont. I was born and raised here. I'm not a transplant from someplace else. I grew up in Longmont. I was one of the last babies born in the old St. Rain Hospital, which is now the Columbine Manor. So, I've seen Longmont grow. For all of us in general, I'm asking, and should go ahead and approve this annexation, because it's something that, like Ron told you, his dad had been, worked with, a lot of different times with other developers, and it just fell through.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. I kind of manipulated the list, so you could go last, chief. Welcome home. Steve Trunk?
Mayor, members of council, I'm Steve Trunk, and I live at 920 Rogers Road with my wife there, and came to Longmont in 1987, because I was offered the position of fire chief. I served in that position for a little over 21 years, and so, when I came up, I wanted to have a few acres, to have some horses with the kids. The city manager wanted me to live in the city. We in turn agreed I could live in a planning area, and so, in '88, I bought some land and build a home. I still live there. I intend to live there, hope to live there for many years more. And so, in the '90s, as that came, I was charged with the responsibility of master planning, where our growth would go, where we'd have additional stations, whether we built them or we relocated and built them. And so, in, when the Fire Station 5 was built out on Airport Nelson, that was for the development and for the growth to the south and to the west, but it was also for the inland in the planning area between Nelson and Rogers, between Hoover and Airport, and they would serve that area. I bring up this kind of master planning, if you would, because HMS has certainly done a good job of doing that. They've been amenable to input, they've been amenable to change, they've worked with all of us, and I think that they have really approached that, let's have a community there. They've done a good job with parks, with the greenway, with the transitions between the various densities that you have there, and of course, the workforce, I am pleased about, because it was disconcerting to me as a fire chief that many of our new firefighters would not live within the community they protected, and this will give them a better opportunity for that, for public safety, for the nurses, for the teachers, and stuff. And so, I would encourage you to support this annexation. I thank you for your time and for the service you do to this community.
Thank you, chief. All right. That concludes, that concludes our public hearing on the matter. Councilmember Finley?
I move passage of ordinance 201809.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Rodriguez is chiming in. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Yeah, I've been here. Don't worry about that. Yeah, I just want to chime in real quick, kind of to give a little bit of my opinion on the specific annexation and project. I believe it was portrayed earlier that one of our council members ran on traffic problems. Well, I ran on affordable and attainable housing, and attainable being another word for workforce, or as to reference Mr. Henson when he talked about seniors that also need this kind of housing as well. And so, this is actually along the lines of, outside of the affordable needs of the city, one of our other major needs, and as I tell people quite often, I'm what you'd call kind of a young, modern urbanist, so I believe in higher density for, A, also sustainability outside of the economic factors related there, too. So, as such, I am definitely in favor of the proposed concept plan, and I hope that our planning development staff can work very closely with HMS moving forward if this passes to ensure that we get that attainable workforce housing that they've talked about in their concept plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that, although I do understand the objections that some of our good citizens have raised, that I also, in addition to running on doing better with traffic, you know, the basic thing I ran on was, if you work in Longmont, you should be able to live in Longmont, and I think that this is a good planned community that does a lot of the things that we've been saying we should do in Envision Longmont, and frankly, I think that it is down to the city to adapt to the pressures that this development may put on our infrastructure, and we need to work hard on that part. I feel like the developer in doing a good job of planning the roadway, the collectors and stuff, have done their part, and now we need to do our part, and so, I am going to vote yes.
Councilmember Pack?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Actually, I have one last question. On these annexations, especially since it's farmland, do, does HMS, I'm specifically saying this one, but it's any annexation, do we get their water rights? Do they bring in their water rights? How does that work?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Pack, Karen Bryant, Planning and Development Services. Yes, part of the annexation agreement, and that's why we're asking for conditional approval, is they will have to transfer all historical water rights into the city of Longmont. They did go before Water Board with the water rights, and the Water Board has agreed that what they're saying is historic, is historic, and so, they will have to sign those over to the city. Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously. So, welcome to city, people. Be good neighbors. All right. The, so we have one general business item, Betcher Annexation Referral, right? No, I know, but, so Mike, doesn't matter. I'm willing to stay as long as necessary, but I know that there was an election tonight, and I know that it looks like Mr. Tim Waters is going to be joining us next week, and so, my question is, we can keep going, I know that the Betcher Annexation, we probably have to do, but my question is, do you guys want to end after that, so those of us who are more, more close with Mr. Waters could go to that event? I know, I'm just guessing, nobody's asked me, but I'm, I know that there's a couple, so I would not, I guess, anybody have a problem with that? Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, Councilmember Pack. Sorry, I keep, I forget, there's a little TV monitor here.
So, basically, what we are taking out of the agenda, or we're going to miss if we leave, is the airport.
We could do that next week, I presume.
Poor David, he's been here all night.
Yeah. He can go home now, though. Not going to be a problem, Harold, if we did that?
No, we can move it. The agenda's not ready. I know Valerie has to work on it tomorrow, so it gives us a chance to move it. Now, I'll tell you, next week's going to be pretty busy.
I understand that. I just want, I just know that there's some celebrating to do, and I want to give my fellow council members that opportunity.
If that's what council wants to do, I would say we almost push it beyond.
Two weeks?
To the next meeting, beyond, because next Tuesday's going to be a pretty long meeting, if that's what you want to do.
That okay with you, Mr. Slater? Say, yeah, whatever you want to do. All right. So, the, all right, so I would actually, unless there's objection, strenuous objection, I think we'll do that. All right, let's go ahead and move on to.
If I could, I know there were some points that were brought up in the conversation about names being released. I did want to clarify that. When you look at the report, that was more general in terms of, it didn't specifically mention the names. There was an open records request in terms of the names, and following state law, we were required to release that, so I wanted folks to understand how that happened.
Okay. Thank you, Harold. All right, let's go on to general business, the Betcher Annexation Referral, and again, this is just giving permission to go forward with the consideration, right? Okay.
Good evening, councilmembers. Eva Pechevsky, Planning and Development Services. This is, again, this is the Betcher Annexation Referral. Just going to give you a real quick background on this. I know it's late and everyone's tired, but just to give you an overall vicinity, again, this is south of Third Avenue on the west side of Hoover Street, south of the railroad tracks. It's directly across west of the Rogers Grove Park, and it is immediately north of the recently approved South Flat Annexation, just to give you context. It's about a 10-acre parcel. It's currently zoned ag in Boulder County. The Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan does have a designation for this property of mixed-use employment that allows a variety of light office industrial uses, and so, they are requesting to be annexed in with a business-light industrial zoning designation. That's our current zoning that would correspond with the MU, Mixed Use Employment, and it does meet the contiguity standards from state statute. And so, this is just briefly their concept plan. As you can see, it's a little vague. There's not a specific project, if you will. They just would like to bring the property in and zone it according to its designated land use designation in Envision Longmont, and that's the long and the short of it. And Barbara Brunk here is representing the applicant. She came up here earlier, is also here to answer any questions. And so, at this juncture, the request is to ask council, may they file a formal annexation application to the city for annexation of this property? And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Nobody's in queue. Any, want to make, somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Rodriguez, the floor is yours, my friend.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First, a quick statement. I would tend to be in favor of this if it does go forward, because I believe in bringing things that are along our greenway into the control of the city as we're making our flood repairs. But, so, I would like to move that we allow them to move forward with their annexation request.
All right. We have a motion and a second. No further debate. Do we have a, let's go ahead and vote. I was going to say, do we have a vote? I don't know, do we? So exciting. And that passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to public final, final call, public invited to be heard. Ms. Gibbs?
Hello again, Kim Gibbs, 7468 Mount Sherman Road, Gunbarrel. I'm so sorry. I know it's really late, and I need to change subjects for just a minute. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, I'd like to talk to you about gun safety, changing the subject, and I'm just going to ask a bold statement, or a bold request, that the city of Longmont move forward with a gun safety ordinance that would include some comprehensive provisions, but in particular, a ban on military-style assault weapons and high-capacity ammo magazines. I wouldn't normally ask this of you, but I think it's become quite clear that our lawmakers at the federal and the state level are just not getting things done and not making progress. Colorado currently has a ban on those high-capacity magazines, but, you know, there is, there's a bill at the state right now in the Senate that would repeal the ban, a bill that's being considered now, along with some other, what I consider to be bad, gun bills. So, the future of that is uncertain. Why am I asking you that? I'm not a Longmont resident, so you might be asking, why is she here asking me this? Well, let me start by saying that my child goes to school at Sunset Middle School. I hope that that gives me some standing. Our family spends a lot of time here in Longmont. We go to the movie theater, we go to other public events, and I think it's become quite clear that people are not safe, not just in schools. You know, we're concerned about all of our kids, but we're concerned about people anywhere, that people, anywhere that people congregate, movie theaters, concerts, church, whatever. I will say a positive thing, though. You know, we chose Sunset Middle School because of the cultural diversity there, because of the outstanding music program and the academics, and we're super, super happy that our child goes to school there. Okay, so, why is a Longmont ordinance needed? I've already mentioned, federal and state lawmakers are not doing their jobs. In 2003, Colorado passed a firearm preemption law that prevents local governments from adopting gun safety laws. However, home-rule cities are partially exempt from this, okay? So, Denver has passed an ordinance a long time ago banning the assault-type weapons, and I know that's kind of a nebulous term, but I trust that you can come up with a good definition. Boulder is currently considering a similar, a similar ordinance. I know Longmont doesn't want to be Boulder, Longmont wants to be Longmont, right? It's a great city. This is worthwhile, please think it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. All right, moving on to, not seeing anyone else, let's move on to mayor and council comments briefly. Okay, seeing, oh, all right, Mayor Protem Christensen.
I know it's late, and I'll make this brief. Two weeks ago, most of us went over to Altoona Middle School and listened to junior-high kids give presentations about various things, and it was delightful. I was there on Wednesday in the morning, and I listened to three young men talking about concealed carry, and it made me shiver, because it reminded me of when I was a child and we had to practice for the end of the world every month, and now, these kids are having to practice for being shot to pieces on a regular basis. And when I left there, I really shivered, because these were really wonderful junior-high guys talking about this, because they face this every day, and when I got in the car, I heard about the shooting in Florida. And when I got in the car, I heard about the shooting in Florida. And I think, as a city, we need to have an open forum and discuss what we're going to do about this, what the school does, what the law enforcement officials, what people who advocate gun rights, just an open community forum, so that people can have a chance to speak about this, and so that we can have some ideas about how to move forward, so that our kids don't have to live with this every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protan. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just want to remind everybody that letters to the editor in The Times Caller are a form of free speech. We all hear and read things that we don't like, but they are free speech. So I think that we need to be respectful of people who are writing those letters and not take them personally, or have a one-on-one conversation with the person. In order to be respectful to each other, we all have to practice that with ourselves. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peck. All right, any remarks from our city manager or city attorney?
Quick remark, mayor, council. I know there was a question about the dog tethering ordinance. We did find
That's coming up, right?
Well, we did find the email. The email was from actually City Attorney May, talking about the ordinances we have in place. In general, we have typically dealt with tethering issues via some of these other animal cruelty ordinances. We're going to get back with Sergeant Buckholz, who was then going to take it and look at other options. We probably think it would be good to, I know there was an individual at coffee with council and getting with them and talking through how we handle those situations when we encounter them. So I just wanted to point you to the email from Mr. May in terms of that. We think the first request was, what kind of ordinances do we have in play? And that's the email from Mr. May. Just wanted to provide that information.
Mr. May?
No comments, mayor?
Oh, wise man. Did you take notes, Harold? Take notes? All right, we're adjourned. Go party.